Mr. Driscoll was very active in the Mount Vernon community. I met him when I started, probably when I was campaigning, I met Mr. Driscoll. And every community has that person who's going to make sure that you know every single thing there is and why their community's important and why you shouldn't forget them. And that was Mr. Driscoll and his wife Alice's role for me in Mount Vernon. He served on the Mount Vernon Town Council for 41 years. He was participated in the volunteer fire department and the rescue squad. And the impact of Mr. Driscoll and his family will be sorely missed. When they took on a project, they just, they went all the way to the mat with it and were able to accomplish far more in that town than, than they would have been based on the resources available. So if you would join me for just a moment of silence in memory of Cecil Earl Driscoll.
My apologies. Ask the commission to consider the following. One, approve a list of claims. Two, approve a list of credits for insolvents, errors, litigation, and tax claims for the 2024 tax year. Three, adopt resolution authorizing request to the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from the fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus, and authorize items to be disposed. Four, approve renewal of the annual maintenance agreement with ALLETE in the amount of $2,280.56 for the county legal department. Five, authorize public works to set up and deliver a variable message board for the town of Dauphin Island to use for one month for an estimated amount of $1,545. Six, approve change order number one with Emerson Roofing for roof replacement, Strickland Youth Center probation building. This change order will decrease the contract by $24,165, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $53,543.
Is this the building that was formerly known as the Crisis Center?
Good morning. Yes, it was.
Okay, and this is where the public defenders are going to move?
Yes, ma'am. And the probation officers will be sharing the same building.
All right, thank you.
Seven, approve change order number one with integrity maintenance for Camp One two-story building renovation. This change order will decrease the contract amount by $9,640, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $295,360. Eight, approve assigning Michael Square License Commission restroom renovations project to Baker LPA Group for design bidding and project administration in the amount of $45,000. Yes, $45,860. Nine, authorize re-advertising for bids for new parking lot lighting for the Eight Mile Shopping Center. Ten, approve sponsorship agreement with the Alabama Coastal Foundation in the total amount of $1,000 for the South Alabama Nonprofit Summit on Thursday, July 17th, with funds divided as follows. Eleven, approve sponsorship agreement with OZM Charitable Pharmacy in the amount of $1,000 from District One Commission Funds for its Jazz Extravaganza fundraiser, Prescription for a Cause, on Thursday, June 26. Twelve, approve appropriation contract with Opportunity for Entertainers for Performing Arts in the amount of $5,000 from District One Education Funds for its MOB Music Festival and Alabama Hip-Hop Week on Friday, July 11th through Sunday, July 20. Thirteen, approve appropriation contract with independent order of Odd Fellows Grand Bay Lodge 73 in the amount of $7,500 from District Three Commission Funds to assist with the cost of operating expenses for the Grand Bay Watermelon Festival on Thursday, July 3rd through Friday, July 4th. Fourteen, adopt resolution authorizing Mobile County Attorney to request Attorney General opinion regarding the interpretation of Act 2025-188 as related to compensation for the Mobile County Probate Judge. Fifteen, will ask to be voted at conference. Approve project development agreement among Mobile County, the City of Mobile, and AAA United States whereby the county will provide a $125,000 contribution to the company to be used for the acquisition of and/or replacement for equipment purchased for the company's new 20,000-square-foot training facility located on Demetropolis Road through which the company will meet the increasing demands for a skilled and qualified workforce in the Mobile area. The 772 public notice was advertised in LANYAP on Wednesday, May 21st.
I have some comments, please. Jay, I want to, where is AAA United States from?
Here in this country, there's several locations.
Okay, and this is an economic incentive, correct?
It is.
That benefits Airbus?
Well, Airbus will be one of their beneficiaries of the training that they'll do. They're also, will be training for other skilled workforce that will come to be in the Mobile area. You asked me before the meeting commissioner about the job count. We are told, and the agreement will still reflect, that there should be 210 jobs within three years. If they get awarded another contract, that would increase by as many as 150 additional jobs over the next three-year period.
At their training facility or people they'll be training for other jobs?
At their training facility here in Mobile and Demetropolis. Now, I don't know the number of people that are, will go through their training process, but clearly Airbus North America is their short-term target focus for whom they will be training these specialized, this specialized workforce for.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't have a problem with people being trained to work at Airbus. My problem is that for over a year, probably, I've been trying to get an economic incentive for a third-generation shipbuilding company in my district, and I can't get a consensus to get that economic incentive passed for a company that's been in our community for 80-plus years that provides local jobs. And this economic incentive really was to expand their operation and expand their workforce, and also provide some amenities for their existing employees and the employees that they are looking to add. And I've, I've, I've shared this with you before, the amount of money that we have given in economic incentives to Airbus and Ostle compared to what we've done to local industries who have been here, again, a third-generation shipbuilding company in my district. And when you do the comparison to the, to the amount of money that we've provided to Airbus and Ostle, the average per job, if you take the money contributed to the number of jobs they provided equals about $9,200 per job at Airbus. And an additional, the, the money that we've provided to Ostle as well is around that same price, about $9,000 per job. And I guess I look at it on how much we've given each industry and how many jobs they provided with that amount of money we gave. And when you do the math, the money I've asked for for my shipyard and another shipyard, there's, there's two economic incentives I've asked for in the value. The total per job comes out to about a third of the amount of money that we've provided Airbus and Ostle for the number of jobs they're provided. So, for example, Airbus, again, $9,200 per job that they've created off of economic incentives they've gotten from the county. And my shipyards, my, my shipyards, the shipyards in my district are going to provide an amount of, for that same number, for the same person, they're paying $3,200 per person that they hire. So, it's pretty hard for me to sit here and not say something about offering an economic incentive. And I, again, I don't have a problem providing an economic incentive that helps train the workforce for Airbus or Ostle. But I also think that we should consider all of these things when we're asked about economic incentives for a company that's been here, again, three generations, 80 years, and another company that's going to be providing a great number of jobs as well. But it's going to be hard for me to justify giving any more economic incentives to anybody until I can provide some economic incentives to some local businesses here who provide the same quality of jobs and the same quality of pay, the same quality of benefits to their employees, and to know also that about 90% of their employees live in Mobile County. So, they've already obviously passed this economic incentive, but I just wanted to go on record with, with what I thought about it. And I also want it to be known that I'm, I'm voting no on this specific item. And just for the record, in, in the future, I'll be looking at all these economic incentives to see who they're going to and make sure that we're providing the same kind of economic incentives for companies who have built our community. I mean, literally built our community. They've, they've been here, they're going to stay here, they're not going anywhere. And so, I think we, as a commission, particularly myself, I won't speak for anybody else, but I think I want to do a better job of providing economic incentives for businesses who have been in our community for a long time. And I think it's something we've moved away from or maybe never even considered when a company's been here for a while and they build their business from the ground up and out of their own pocket. And I think they deserve as much consideration as these other companies. So, thank you.
I have a comment. I don't want to give the impression that I'm opposed to your projects down in the Bayou. I think what we had, what I had tasked the administration to do was to give us a list of all the requests that we've received. And we have received numerous requests for economic development initiatives and give us the amount of money that we have available without having to borrow money or, or make plans in some way to, to go outside of our normal economic development funding or, or even general funding. We don't really want to dip into our general funding for economic development initiatives. But I think that we're at the point now, you know, we, in the past, we, we've, it's, we've had the funding to be able to address most of these requests that have come to the commission. We are getting to a point where we don't. And that's what we're faced with, and we have to decide on a cost-benefit analysis of each one of these. Now, this AAA, this, this was agreed to a long time ago and based on the cost-benefit of that particular project and, and what it would bring to the community, you know, we, and because we'd already agreed to that, we, we let that go. But these, everything else that comes in, I agree with you from here on out, needs to be scrutinized very carefully because we're not, we, we cannot, we're getting the point, we can't address every single one that comes in, every one that the chamber presents to us anymore because we just do not have the funds to do that. They've, you know, it's, it's become a situation where we're going to have to be, we're carefully picking shoes among them. And how much? And, and depending on what job, how many jobs, what the long-term benefit is to the community, all that has to be looked at and scrutinized to determine what, what we can afford and what we can't. That's just where I stand. And I'm not against it. I just haven't gotten information yet to make a, a decision. Excuse me? Okay.
And I, I'll assure you that this economic incentive hasn't been hanging out there longer than the one I've been asking for. This has been going on for, I'm, I'm saying approximately a year I've been asking for this. And I think, and I, and I won't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think I have a consensus to spend the same amount of money. I asked for, I'm just going to lay it out there, I asked for $350,000 for Burdon, who is a new shipyard who's moved to Mobile County, and they're going to be providing jobs in the Bayou. They have a billion-dollar contract with the Coast Guard. And I asked for $350,000 for Master Shipbuilding, who is the, the third-generation company that I speak of. And I think it was, I think it come back to me, and anybody here can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it came back to me that we would provide Burdon with $350,000 because of the number of jobs they're providing and what they're wanting to do with the economic incentive. But we would only provide Master with $250,000 based on the number of jobs. The number of jobs are pretty equal. Like, the numbers I gave are real numbers. I mean, it's, it's apples to apples compared to what we've given other industries here. So, what I went back and asked, because again, we're, we were getting back into, and I, and I, I'm glad that Burdon's here, and I think they're going to, they're going to do a good job building ships for the Coast Guard. But again, we were flipping, flipping it to where a company who is moving to our town, Burdon, was getting more money than the local shipyard that's been here for three generations. So, I ask at that point, instead of doing it that way, if we could not provide an economic incentive equally and split it. So, instead of giving Master 250 and Burdon 350, I said, let's give each 300,000. That's way less money than we've provided in economic incentives to Airbus and Ostle. And I, I hate to keep saying that because I don't want it to seem like I'm picking on them. I, I'm, I'm very happy with the number of jobs they provide in our community. I'm happy with the things that they're doing. But I'm, I'm just really advocating for my local shipyard that's been there. And somebody can correct me, but I think, and I'm, I think I would have consensus to do 300 and 300, which is the same exact amount of money as 250 and 350, just split the difference. And, and maybe I don't have consensus to do that. That's, maybe I misunderstand that.
You may have consensus, but in the meantime, we need to evaluate all these other requests that we've received and what they bring to the community and the amount of money that we have available and how we match that with these requests. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. I just, I, but I will, I would like to reemphasize one more time that for every, for the amount of money that, over the years that we've given Airbus and the number of jobs they provided, it comes out to $9,259 per job. For Burdon, it comes out to $4,100 per job. So, you're getting the same quality of a job for half the price. And for Master, it's even less than that. I think it's about $3,400 per job. But anyway, it's, I think we're-
The chamber would use a formula, they factor in, you know, growth potential and all of that.
No, I don't, you know, I really, I, I, I'm glad the chamber does that, but this is something I don't really need the chamber's help on. It's pretty easy to figure out with the numbers. But anyway, I appreciate y'all hearing me out. I just-
It's not over yet. We just, we just haven't gotten to the point where decisions are made.
Well, and I guess that's kind of what, why I'm bringing this up because I know that, that my ask has been on the table for close to a year. And I think we just recently, in the last three or four months, had a-
I wasn't aware of the ask for, for a year.
I haven't been aware of your ask for a year either.
Well, I'll, I'll certainly find documentation to support that it's been approximately a year that I've been working on this economic incentive. Thank you.
The only thing I, I would add to this conversation is that when I make, when I make a decision, ever since I've been here, the thing that has been most important to me is the, the number of jobs and how much those jobs are going to pay. And I, I didn't, that was my simple way of figuring out how to make sense of, of an economic development ask. And while it may, we may have contributed, I don't know where your $9,200 number came from the cost of per job, but certainly the, the payroll that's generated for each one of those jobs far exceeds $9,000 a year. So, the, the, your 9,200 is a one-time payment. The payroll is the ongoing contribution at 60, 70, 80, 90, sometimes $100,000 for some of these jobs. And that's how, that's how I come down. It's the number of jobs that are going to be created and, and the payroll that's going to be generated as a result. That is just as simple, it's simple for me. I don't, I haven't done all of your, your background analysis. It's just for me, how much are we going to pay them and how many people are we going to pay at that amount? Is, and for me, that's the calculation. Is that worth an investment by the county?
Yeah, and my numbers, just for the record, came straight from the chamber, since we're talking about the chamber. That's number of jobs provided divided by amount of money they've received. And I understand, but I will say that, that the quality of the, of the, the, there's an equivalence to the pay and the benefits that, that the employees of these two shipyards receive compared to the shipyard and Airbus here in downtown Mobile. They're, they're not going to have as many employees, but also I, I bring back up, they've been employing people in our community for three generations, 80 years. So, you know, that's another thing I take into consideration. So, I, I'm, again, I appreciate you, y'all hearing me out. I just wanted it to be heard and known that that's really my, I'm not against Airbus, I'm not against Ostle, I'm not against AAA. But I've also got to stand up and fight for what I think is right. And I think it's right to fight for an economic incentive for a company that's been doing business in our community for 80 years. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Sixteen. Approve alcohol application for the transfer of MBK 2019 Retail Beer and Retail Table Wine Off Premises Only License to Ya Ya Oil One for Donna's Two on Paget Switch Road in Irvington. Seventeen. Approve service order with Unity Fiber to provide 100 megabit per second Ethernet connection to Mobile County Fleet Maintenance Facility on Moffett Road in Sims. Monthly reoccurring cost of $585 for a 36-month term and a managed custom router at no charge. Eighteen. Approve professional services agreement with Center for the Living Arts. Doing business at Alabama Contemporary Art Center in an amount not to exceed $14,500 from District One Commission Funds to provide consultancy services related to development and execution of exhibitions at the Ace Theater. And Commissioners, I'd like to combine nineteen through twenty-two to approve agreements with Balabatri, Creola, Satsuma, and Pritchard for various voting machines and express votes machines for their municipal elections to be held August 26th. And if a runoff election is required, an additional for the same equipment for use on a September 23rd. Pending legal review.
Have we, have we heard from, I know we've heard from City of Mobile. Have we heard from any other municipal, I just don't want them to wait too late. And if, if they typically ask us and haven't, can we reach out to them to go ahead and get, get moving?
We'll do that and try to get it added for Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Annalisa?
Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, we already reached after them. They are aware of the timeline, but we'll reach out again. And Legal has put in a draft for us to sign between the mutual agreement, so we'll get it all taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-three. Approve sponsorship agreement with Real Steel Foundation in the amount of $500 from District One Education Funds for its Neil Farrell Jr. Summer Camp Ball, uh, Summer Football Camp on Saturday, June 28th. Twenty-four. Approve purchase of real property located on Halls Mill Road in Mobile County from John Allen Phillips for the purchase price in the amount of $150,000, plus agreed upon closing costs and to authorize Commission President to sign all documentation related to the transaction pending legal review to be paid from District Two funding as follows.
Is there a reason we don't have the number assigned? Typically, we...
We do have them. We, we just got them this morning. They'll be on Monday's agenda.
Okay.
Twenty-five. Approve Contract Amendment Number One with Dakin Street for Project Cypress Creek Golf Course New Driving Range Building in the amount of $1,700 for additional design services. Twenty-six, we're going to ask to be held over. Twenty-seven. Approve Grant Award Amendment from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan to increase the grant amount by $3,303 for a total in the amount of $2,193,606 with no match required and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated... Twenty-eight. Approve a Commission District Project to furnish and deliver three loads of washed sand and two loads of sifted topsoil in the estimated amount of $1,700 to the North Mobile County Soccer Club.
Can we vote on this today?
Sure. Some move?
Thank you.
Second.
Twenty-nine. Approve Contract Amendment Number Four to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Stand Tech Consulting Services to extend the period of performance through July 16th, 2026 with no additional cost. Thirty. Approve Contract Amendment Number Fifteen to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel to extend the period of performance through June 23rd, 2026 with no additional cost. Thirty-one. Approve Contract Amendment Number Thirteen to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with McDonald, Alabama, to extend the period of performance through June 25th, 2026 with no additional cost. Thirty-two. Approve Contract Amendment Number Twelve to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Watermark Design Group to extend the period of performance through June 22nd, 2026 with no additional cost. Thirty-three. Authorize President of the County Commission to sign easement agreement with Alabama Power Company to install power distribution panel at Chickasaw Bog RV Campground. Thirty-four. Approve Contract Amendment Number Sixteen with Moffett and Nickel for Project Cedar Point Pier to add additional construction engineering and inspection services for Cedar Point Phase One for a fee in the amount of $66,753. Thirty-five. Approve a contract with Ardua Group to provide professional engineering services for Project Grand Bay Sewer System. The cost associated with this contract to be reimbursed by the restored grant. Thirty-six. Approve renewal of professional services agreement with JGBAG relating to inspection services for a, for a third, one-year term. Thirty-seven. Authorize acceptance of Master Subscription Software as a Service Agreement with LCP Tracker in the amount of $5,798 for continued service of their certified payroll reporting software. Thirty-eight. We ask to be voted at conference. Authorize advertisement for request for proposals for legal services at the, for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant.
What kind of legal services are we going to need, Gordon?
Good morning. This will be mainly for title searches for a few of the programs we're running.
Thanks.
Some move?
Second.
Thirty-nine. We ask to be voted at conference. Authorize advertisement for request for proposal for inspection services for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant.
Some move?
Second.
Forty. We ask to be voted at conference. Authorize advertisement for request for proposal for home buyer training for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant.
Some move?
Second.
Forty-one. Approve sub-recipient agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile doing business as Lifeline Counseling Center in the amount of up to $150,000 for supportive services for individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness under the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan. Forty-two. Approve sub-recipient agreement with Hope for All Gulf Coast in the amount of up to $320,000 for supportive services for individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness under the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan. Forty-three. Approve sub-recipient agreement with Franklin Primary Center in the amount of up to $327,194 for supportive services for individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness under the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan.
This should be primary health center.
Yeah.
We will make that correction.
Thanks.
Forty-four. Approve Change Order Number Four with Ben M. Radcliffe Contractor for Project Mobile County Golf Course Project Facilities Phase. This change order will increase the contract by $87,407 and increase the contract time by 104 days. The new contract will be in the amount of $7,965,946.75 with a substantial completion date of September 15th, 2025.
What's this change order? What's, what's he going to have to do around it?
Matthew, I'm, I was about to ask, I know that we have several change orders for Radcliffe and also for Mid-America, so he can probably explain what they are.
I do. Good morning, Commissioner. So this change order, there's a couple of things included in it. We had quite a bit of undercut that was required for roadway at the golf course for this facilities phase portion of it. And we also have a transformer that will be installed by Alabama Power that's included in this. For the next item, item number forty-five, this change order is to raise one of the bridges that's on the golf course.
It's, it, it goes over a waterway that, there's a bridge there now that we needed to raise. That, that's his number forty-five. But it raises the bridge to the current bridge that's there. I saw, I, I don't mean to change the subject, but I saw you swatting. And I, and there's...
It's up here, too.
I don't know where the, all that, uh, money we spent to kill all these gnats, Ozzy. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've had gnats everywhere this morning.
I was just thinking recently. I hadn't seen any, and here they are.
My first one was yesterday. I was like, oh, God, they're back. They're back.
In case you didn't see them, Ozzy, I just wanted to let you know we got gnats. Okay, good. We, I haven't seen them in a while, but this morning we have them. Now Dana's over there going crazy. Thank you, Matthew.
So, and Ozzy says they are under control. That's your story and you're sticking to it?
Forty-five. Approve Change Order Number Four with Mid-America Golf and Landscape for Project Mobile County Golf Course Project Golf Course Phase. This change order will increase the contract by $102,236.20 with no increase to the contract time. And the new contract will be in the amount of $14,442,996.62. Forty-six. Consider, consider taking the following action on this bid.
Just one?
Just one.
Amazing.
Today. Forty-seven. Approve renewal of software agreement with Magnet Forensics in the amount of $4,645 for Magnet Acium Essentials used by the AC, ICAC unit to assist in their investigations for the sheriff's office. Forty-eight. Approve a 36-month lease agreement with Xerox Corporation and the current state of Alabama contract for two Xerox copiers in the amount of $170.09 each per month and 11 Xerox copiers in the total amount of $2,030.46 per month for the revenue commission to be paid from Cost Center Nine. And Commissioners, I gave you copies of revised language for items forty-nine and fifty. Item forty-nine, we ask to be voted at conference. Approve Master Lease Purchasing Agreement with John Deere Financial pursuant to contract with Sourcewell for certain golf course maintenance equipment for Cypress Creek Golf Course. The county is lease purchasing the following equipment. This agreement has a three-year term with a monthly equipment charge of $6,159.71 plus any applicable interest pending legal review.
Some move?
Second.
Item fifty, we ask to be voted at conference. Approve Master Lease Agreement with John Deere Financial pursuant to contract with Sourcewell for certain golf course maintenance equipment for Cypress Creek Golf Course. The county is leasing the following equipment. This agreement has a three-year term with a monthly equipment lease purchase charge of $20,010.20 to be paid from Cost Center 168 pending legal review.
So forty-nine is a lease purchase. Fifty just says lease.
Yes.
We intend to do that?
There, there is. There's, there's, some of the, some of the equipment is by the lease purchase format and some is by the true lease format.
Is it more advantageous, is there a financial advantage to doing it that way?
Well, what we're doing right now, Commissioner, good morning, first of all, the stuff that we're leasing while we're growing the golf course in, we don't want to buy that because we're, we're going to wear it out these first three years. There's more sand that's going to go out, more maintenance will be needed these first three years. As we go through with this, we will be looking at maybe purchasing the equipment in the future. But this first time, this leased equipment will get worn out. We don't, we don't want to own that.
Okay, thank you.
Don't go anywhere. I want, so, I know these sound pretty nonchalant about this equipment, but it's pretty exciting that we're leasing equipment, maintenance equipment, which indicates that we're getting close to taking over some of the responsibilities of maintaining the golf course. And Shane, since you're down here, would you mind giving a quick update of where we're at on the driving range and the fairways and the greens and just where we're at in construction?
We're going to be putting grass out next week on the driving range. We had the irrigation turned on this week. Watching water fly and not look at dirt was pretty exciting. So we will maintain that. The golf course was on the phone this morning with Alabama Power. We will have the power turned on to the pump station for the golf course tomorrow. And then we'll start grassing the golf course in sections, probably starting in the next two or three weeks. So it is very exciting because I'm sick of looking at dirt.
Yeah. So we're getting ready to plant grass and then it comes, becomes our responsibility. So it's pretty exciting. I'm hoping that the driving range will be open. Not, I'm not going to give a date. I hate giving dates. I also want, Aaron, thank you to Aaron. She works for Alabama Power. She's our representative here at government, I guess her job is government relations and she's our representative from the power company. And there's, we've had some issues out there with our, just old power that was there before. And I just want to take a moment to thank you for helping us get through some of those issues. You've always been on the spot, on spot when I called and with these issues. So thank you, too.
I'm moved to approve item fifty.
Second.
Fifty-one. We ask to be voted at conference. Accept Proposal from Beard Equipment Company to the county providing seven pieces of golf course maintenance equipment for the county's use at Cypress Creek Golf Course from the full execution of the proposal until such time as the county's new leased golf course maintenance equipment can be delivered to the county for a period not to exceed three months with cost to the county for all upkeep, maintenance, and any necessary repair or replacement of the equipment while it is in the county's possession.
This equipment is, Commissioner is, they're loaning us this equipment until we can get the previous equipment that we just approved in. So it's no charge on that until our equipment gets here. Is that correct, Matthew?
Some move?
Second.
And Commissioners, we have one add-on this morning that we ask to be voted at conference. Approve a Commission District Three EFP project to rent a chipper for Baker High School. The estimated cost for this work is $1,000.
Some move?
About a second. I just was...
Okay, we want to, did we want to vote on that today?
Yeah, we did. But I, the, when he said the price, it threw my, threw me off. But I, I remember what he said now. Thank you. I guess we'll have, which it doesn't matter because we voted on it, but we'll have an exact figure on the agenda Monday. Okay, thank you.
It was up to 1,000. Isn't that what you told me?
Yeah, yeah. It threw me when he said the price because I had another thought in my head.
He's, he's not trying to get you.
I don't know about that sometimes.
Well, not this time.
Yeah, not this time.
All right. Madam County Engineer.
Good morning. Number one, approve the functional classification of the following roads as listed below. Number two, award combined... Number two, award combined bid to PL Russell LLC for improvements to selected curb ramps throughout Mobile County's urban area to conform to ADA requirements for their low bid in the amount of $587,010. These projects are an 80/20 split with ALDOT for construction and construction engineering and inspection. Number three, approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for CENI for the previous item for improvements for selected curb ramps to be assigned to Civil Southeast. Number four, approve proposed plat only of Magusville Place Phase Three and proposed plat only of Long Myra Estates off McFarland Road. Number five, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way and/or easement from the following property owner for the following project. Number six, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track One on Natchez Trace Road in the amount of $785 for Project Natchez Trace Road Great Dream Basin Pav. Number seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Two on Weecroft Road North in the amount of $1,065 for Project Weecroft Road North Great Dream Basin Pav. Number eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement in the total amount of $2,825 for Project Bass, Brim, and Stripe Drive Great Dream Basin Pav as follows. Number nine, authorize application for federal assistance, 95% funding for the Jeremiah Denton Airport fiscal year '25 in the amount of $122,088 for the replacement of Bulkhead Phase Four, which will be the final phase of that project. Also adopt a resolution authorizing County Commission to make application to the state of Alabama through ALDOT for state airport funding in the amount of $3,213. And that's it.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. We have several announcements today. So first, I know you all know this, but hurricane season started June 1st and will last through November 30th. The best time to prepare for a storm is in advance, and so we would encourage you to go to mobilecountyema.gov or ready.gov for preparedness tips and resources. And just a little bit of information, Mobile County EMA has been working really hard to prepare for the season. They work all year round for, for, for this time of the year. And they held stakeholders meeting last week and they'll hold another one on June 10th, but this helps all the organizations involved with emergency planning and response to be ready for when we need them. And we would also encourage you to download the Mobile County EMA app from the App Store or Google Play. It's, it's very handy. It not only gives you alerts, but it will, i- if needed, indicate where shelters are and things of that nature. Second. Between Memorial Day, Flag Day, and Independence Day, we have American flags flying regularly in the summer, so we would like to remind anyone who needs to dispose of a worn American flag, you can bring them to Mobile County's Flag Retirement Box in the atrium of Government Plaza for proper disposal, and we partner with the Sheriff's Department on that. Third. On Saturday, June 7th, Alabamians and out-of-state visitors can fish without a license in most public waters, including at Mobile County Parks. The Alabama Department of Conservation and National Resources hosts Free Fishing Day as part of the National Fishing and Boating Week, which runs June 1st through 8th. And you can find out more about that at outdooralabama.com. Fourth. You may see a lot of people wearing orange tomorrow and through the weekend, and that's because the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the start of Wear Orange Weekend. So multiple organizations nationwide participate in this day and weekend dedicated to honoring the lives of those affected by gun violence and to advocating for an end to gun violence. It's a national movement with events and activities taking place across the country, including locally. Fifth. Next week, there will be an Updates and Next Steps Public Engagement Meeting for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District on Thursday, June 12th, 5:30 PM at Bishop State Community College. This event provides an update on the master plan and its early implementation projects, and it kicks off a historical context study which conforms to National Park Service protocols and will form the base for future storytelling and interpretation for the district. Sixth. Construction is set to begin Monday, June 9th on the new Mobile Government Plaza Pocket Park. It's funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and the project aims to create additional outdoor gathering place in the high-density area of downtown, which was a need revealed during COVID-19 pandemic. Construction should take about eight months, and the new park will feature a focal point of a new fountain, upgraded landscaping, lighting, new pavers, new flagpoles, and enhanced security features. Finally, I'll remind you to connect to Mobile County through our various social medias, media and web. And Commissioners, did I forget anything, or is there anything you'd like to add?
I think you covered it.
I did, I want to clarify one thing because I, I don't want it to seem that I was deceptive when I said approximately a year. I had my first meeting with Master and Bird Island, August the 8th of last year. It's been nine months, so I think that's pretty close to approximately a year. I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I wasn't saying you hadn't been working on it a year. I just, no, I haven't known about it a year.
Our awareness of it.
That's all.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Anything else? Dana, you have anything you want to say? You got it? That's unusual. I thought you never saw Mike, you didn't want to grow up. Just kidding, thank you for all you do. If nothing else, we stand adjourned.